Beyond, it's one, I got 1:30. And that's the time we're supposed to start this meeting. So let's go ahead and start, call the meeting to order. Good afternoon, everyone. This is a September 11th, 2023 zoning board of adjustments meeting. And I guess we all know what September 11th stands for from back the day it hit, the day of that infamy. But we'll move on. And I need to call to order and establish that a quorum is present. And we do have a quorum. And so we need to review and take action on the previous minutes. So y'all look over the previous minutes and tell me what to do. You want to make a motion? If y'all want to, or we'll talk about them, or throw them in the trash can, or...
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second then.
I have a second. Let's vote on the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving on. Item number three, ZBA 23-19, 1716 West Harris Avenue, single member district number five, Karen Hesse Smith, request for a 10-foot variance for both front yard setbacks on a corner lot. And Sherri, hello.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the ZBA Board. The item before you today is the one that is in red on the map up there. It is a large lot. The owner that has just recently purchased that lot is going to rehab the house that's there, and he wants to plat off a second lot. So he wants to divide it. It meets all of the requirements as far as the size of the lot. It's a little over 100 wide by 130 long. And so it has plenty of square footage, and it does meet, will meet all of the setbacks. The problem comes in as the applicant has applied for a 10-foot variance, which will have him a 15-foot setback on both Harris and Van Buren. Part of that reason that he wants that is, yes, it will give them a larger side yard on both sides. The large home, when it was originally built, was built very close to what now has to be the side lot line, so both of them to have their five-foot side lots. It's going to be really close. And if they had only a 15-foot setback instead of the 10, the owner felt that he would be able to put a house on there of a size that he intends. The larger home that's existing there has a front yard setback on Harris right now of nine feet. And if we go down and across, we see that this is the older part of town, and many of the homes there have the 20 or 25-foot front yard setback, but almost none of them have a 25-foot setback on the second front yard on a corner lot. Back then, we didn't require it, and none of them practically do that. Most of the homes actually front on what I would call the north-south, which would be Van Buren, Jackson, those streets. And the side, or they front on Harris, but the side yard is on those streets. And so that side yard on Jackson in particular is much closer. So where his request is to have a 10-foot variance for both front yards, resulting in a 15-foot setback for both Harris and Van Buren. And I probably mushed it up. But that is the home in question, and the lot is, will be where all of the large trees are right now. And he has a house plan that fits in between those trees with a garage that will then have entrance off of Van Buren. We did send out 31 notifications to the surrounding property owners, and I did not receive any back, any...
I'm here, I just have one property owner here.
Okay, thank you. Other than the one, I did not receive any, either for or against. In doing the analysis, the first thing we looked at was the fact that this is an infill lot. It does, most of the development has occurred in that area, and it's been existing for a large number of years. The existing home, as I indicated, the existing one faces Harris, and the new one will also be built facing Harris, just like the existing home. He reasoned he asked for a 10-foot variance. It has a front right-of-way of about eight and a half feet, and so that will, with another 15 feet, that will set him back close to the 25 feet. He'll still be about 10 feet behind the existing house on that entrance, but he felt that would be okay. The lot size, once it is divided, does meet all of the minimums if the variance is granted. And without granting the variance, it will make the new home on Harris even further back than the existing home. And that was a concern of his. And granting this variance will not adversely affect the area from staff's point of view and other variances that have been granted in the area's similar requests. So staff's recommendations for the zoning board of adjustment to approve a variance from section, should be section, both 402 and 502 of the zoning ordinance to allow a 15-foot front yard setback on both front yards in lieu of the 25-foot setback requirement. And with that, are there any questions that you might have?
Could you go back to the picture?
Surely.
Please. So the house next door facing...
Faces Harris.
Facing Harris.
Yes.
And the one on Van Buren is how far back, next door there?
The next door one is about 20 feet back.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So this one's 20 feet back?
Mm-hmm. And the one on Harris is how, how much? Sure.
Nine feet.
Nine feet?
Yes, the right-of-way.
This is only nine feet?
The right-of-way. If you look at, at the block right next, you'll see where the right-of-way is, actually. We have a couple of homes that are right, right on the right-of-way, or right close.
So the new house is going to sit back behind the...
Behind the, yes, behind the other house.
What's going to happen with the vacant, the land there, space there at the corner of Van Buren and Harris?
He's going to build another home there?
That will face...
And it will face Harris.
Harris, okay.
Yes.
And then there's going to be one behind the existing house that will face Van Buren?
That will be the garage.
The garage, okay.
The garage for the house will face Van Buren.
So the lot is being split...
Is the lot being split down the middle?
Down the middle? Are they dividing?
But separating, it's not quite down the middle. It slides over just a little bit. The existing home, he has to give that home a five-foot side yard setback, so it will, that will leave him with 52 feet remaining on the width of the second lot, once it's platted. And then, so that's what, the reason that he's asking for that variance on setback, so he wouldn't have to build such a long elongated home. He could build a smaller home, which is what he intends. And then the garage behind that home will face Van Buren, and will have access to that garage off of Van Buren.
How much right-of-way is there?
That one, I believe, is seven.
So there's no driveway in the front facing Harris?
There is not. There's a, a parking area, yes.
Do they have a, do they have like a drawout or a plan? Do they have any kind of plan?
Um... You don't have a site plan? And I think if I've misspoken about anything, or they've, because I know it's in design, and they're shifting things a little bit, I think they will be able to answer your questions. But the last time I talked to John, I said if you have a footprint, that would help, but...
Well, because it hasn't eight feet in, and then...
So what is the total size of that lot, the way it is, the red part?
It's probably okay with them all.
It's about 100 by 130.
It does stand there, yes, but it's Van Buren.
Yeah.
Let's, let's make sure that we have everybody either come to the microphone or have the microphone on. Thank you.
Well, when the applicant comes up, we'll have him answer those very specific, because it's still lit in flux at this point.
Is there a requirement for a setback for a garage? Like you have to have so long of a driveway or anything like that?
It would have the same setback as 25 feet.
But we're switching it?
But you would, you would want your garage further back in the placement, so there would be place to park in front of it also.
So the garage, you're saying, will be set back farther than the house?
Yes. Unless that has changed also.
We think.
Hi. You snuck in for me. My back was stuck. Welcome.
Thank you.
You have any questions?
No, not right now. Thank you, though. Sorry I'm late.
Yeah. It used to be over by your office, huh?
Mm-hmm. It was.
Any questions?
Not yet, but I might later.
Okay.
Would you like me to leave it on this?
Yes, please, for now. Okay. Well, if I wasn't confused before, I'm confused now. Just kidding, Sherri, you did a good job. All right. Now, do I have any public comment?
And as a public comment is coming up, I would just remind board members, if you don't mind pulling your microphone close as you speak, so that they can get, get it on the recording. That'd be very helpful, thank you.
Did I, hadn't I been doing that?
No, I think you're doing great, Gary.
Yeah, okay.
You're doing great. Thank you.
All right, sir. Welcome. State your name for the record, please.
Jack Downey, SKG Engineering. Thank you for hearing our case today. They want to build a decent home there and, and use that land instead of leaving it vacant. It'll benefit the public, you know, as well. And we just want to build something that's, you know, that fits in the neighborhood and is fitting to there. If we don't get the setbacks adjusted, the lot's too narrow really to put a house there because the existing house was built a little more than halfway over. And by the time we give it the setbacks for the side and another side setback, and then 25 feet, there's nothing left really to build a decent house on. So we just need the extra 10 feet, and we would appreciate that.
Well, I don't, myself, I don't have a big problem with the house facing Harris, because it, you come up to Harris, you, coming down Harris, you have to stop and look both ways, and then turn left or right. So the, the house they're going to build there, you're probably not going to have a line of sight issue when you pull up there to that intersection to look right, to look left, to see if traffic's coming, right?
I don't, I don't believe there'll be a line of sight issue with that.
Okay. I don't either.
You also have a controlled intersection at Pecos and Van Buren, and a controlled intersection there. So typically, you don't have a lot of real fast cars. They're either starting or stopping in that area.
Because you're going to be, let's see, let me read the, be allowed for 10-foot variance. So you're going to have a 15-foot setback, and then you're going to have roughly an eight-foot right-of-way?
Seven or eight.
Is that what it is?
So that's going to put us about 22, 23 feet behind the curve?
22 and 23 feet.
So you got a pretty good distance there.
Yeah.
Same thing on Harris Street.
And it will not be in the site triangle?
Correct.
I'm, I'm sorry.
It will not be in the site triangle?
Okay. And then on the garage, opening up to Van Buren, you said the driveway has to be 25 feet? Is that what you said?
The garage, I'm assuming...
The driveway?
The garage, you weren't asking for a setback?
No.
No.
You gotta have, you gotta have 18 feet minimum between the property line and the garage. Got to have what now? 18 feet. Because you have to have a nine by 18. So if you put two, it's 18 by 18 to get the required parking?
Mm-hmm. You're changing the setback on that side, though, aren't you?
Is it urged, are you requesting the setback on the side as well?
Yes.
Are you?
Yes.
Jack, okay.
So you're having 15 foot on the front, 15 foot on the side?
Well, just to kind of clarify, so the way they want to orient the lot, it would create this as two front yards, one front yard towards Harris and one front yard toward Van Buren. So traditionally, we think the one, that if the house faces Harris, Van Buren is a side yard, but in our ordinance, it calls it another front yard. That's where the two 25s are going to be cut back to two 15-foot setbacks. So it'll be 15 foot off of Harris and 15 foot off of Van Buren.
I don't have any problem. More questions?
Thank you.
Another for Jack. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
You had another. Gary, you had another?
Yeah.
I think you wanted...
I'm sorry. Another public comment? Come on up.
Longhorn. Longhorn fan, they won. State your name, sir, for the record.
Okay. I'm just a neighbor.
State your name, please, sir.
Tom Stallow.
Tom, welcome.
You're going to split that lot east and west or north and south?
Sure. Somebody...
It's my understanding that you're splitting it north-south, right?
North-south. So the line, the, the property line will run parallel with Van Buren?
Yes, sir.
And then you're going to stick a house on the corner there on Van Buren and Harris?
Yes, sir.
And then you, but you're going to set it back a little bit?
It's going to be, yes, it would have to be set back the 15 feet plus the existing right-of-way. So that would be about 22 feet, 23 feet.
So I have to set, it's going to set back further than that other house?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, because the other house is only like nine foot from the property line?
I know. It's terrible. Yeah.
Really not making the ordinance. I don't know. The only problem I have with it is, is it's just people buying it and trying to cut it up and make some money off it. They should just sell that house, and then whoever buys that house decided what they wanted to do with that extra space. But I know it's, I don't know. I mean, it, it will create a problem on Van Buren, because, you know, people, they're already pissed off because they got to stop at the light, and so they're just, you know, coming down there. But progress is progress, I guess. I mean, that house's been sitting vacant for a while, so it's probably a good thing. It's, I don't know. I guess I'm just a traditionalist, and, and I just like that big lot for that house.
Is the house on the lot vacant? The house showing there?
Yeah, yeah. They're trying to flip it. Somebody's trying to flip it. It's been vacant for a while.
Year, two years, 10 years, five years?
Uh, well, it was a drug house for about 10 years, and then I guess maybe Jackie went to jail or something, and then it sat vacant for about two years, and...
Is it still, is it boarded up, or...
Uh, it's, it's looking good now. They're putting new windows in it, and they just repainted it, and they're...
They're making an effort to improve it?
Oh, yeah. Whoever bought it is, is definitely improving it.
Yeah. Well, that's a, that's a strange lot layout there. What they're, the way I see it, what they're wanting to do is kind of what it looks like across the street on Harris Street with the corner of the house and the house next to it, and then come back behind it and put a garage in. And they'll spend some money.
Yeah, they'll spend some money.
They'll spend some money, and it'll be brand new.
Yeah. I guess that's still better than...
You can't do anything but raise your taxes.
Yeah. I just come back from that.
That's progress, right?
I just come back from that meeting. But, yeah. I don't know. I guess it's up to the board, but, but I just stated my opinion, I guess.
Tom, we appreciate your concern, and we're with you. Thank you, sir. All right. Any more public comment? Yes, sir. Come on up. State your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Brandon Clark, and...
Brandon.
I'm one of the owners of the property.
Okay. How long have you owned it, Brandon?
Um, almost two years.
Okay.
So we've been slowly working on it, and should have it ready to market in about another two months. So we had to go through completely, like he had mentioned. It was, it was not well-cared-for for a long time. So, but it's going to be a lovely home when we're all said and done. That, that property, as it sits, sits on two and a half lots. And so what will end up being done is basically the, the existing structure will be on a lot and a half where it sits and it takes up. And then the, the way it appears, I'm sure we'd have to look at the records, it looks like at some point the lot we're wanting to bring back into, to be able to be usable, just the way everything sits. It looks like there was, once upon a time, a house there. And so I don't know, I don't know how long...
It's going to match you up with what's across the street.
I don't know how long ago it was brought in to just be one big property. But that's, that's what we would like to do. We'd like to build a really cute little 1,400-square-foot home there, to be able to do that when the variance is, is needed, so it doesn't end up with a real skinny shotgun house. Or honestly, without the variance, like Jack mentioned, it's not really buildable, and it just has to be what it is. And so that's all we're requesting, is be able to upgrade it and build a cute little lovely home there. Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, let me, let me think about it. You're going to, are you going to sell the home that you're redoing?
Yeah, yeah, that's it. We're going to sell it.
Is this a meets and bounds description, dividing it up? How's that going to, or it's not replat?
He's going to have to replat it. He's working on a plan.
It's going to be a replat?
Okay, okay.
This was the first step.
This is first step, okay.
Yes.
All right. Just making sure that he's going to go to a replat on it, just be able to sell the property there.
For sure.
Any questions? Other gentleman? No? Okay. No? Thank you. Okay, thank you. That must mean the board has their mind made up on what to do, so let's hear a motion. Or board comments. I got to go with board comments first. Sorry. Any comments from the board on this?
I think as long as it's not going to mess with the line of sight, I'm okay with it.
Is that a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the 15-foot setback on both sides.
Second?
Got a motion and a second? Any more comments on this before we go to the vote? There being none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it passes. Good luck, Brandon.
Where are we are? Would you? Are you leaving already?
All right. Item number four, ZBA 23-20, 5622 Woodbine Lane, single member district number one, Tommy Hebert. A request for a 13.5-foot rear yard setback variance from a required 20-foot rear yard setback, because the structure is closer than 10-foot to the residence. Hello, Ray.
Good afternoon. Ray Lineberry Planner. So this house is on 5622 Woodbine Lane, District One, in the Country Club neighborhood, and it's RS1 zoning. They are requesting, so I'm going to jump ahead, just so you know. So the six and a half feet was the concrete pad. They are actually asking for seven foot, six foot, seven foot, six inches from the concrete block. So, and since it is, they are requesting, I guess, a little, is it a bit more? I don't know what the right word is, but less than originally, a little bit, not as much as they were, they are requesting for not as much as they were. It's, it, uh...
So, Ray, just to clarify, the 13 and a half feet in the agenda, could you clarify that?
That is 20 minus 6.5. That is the, they are requesting for 13 and a half feet in order to be six and a half feet from the fence.
So that's to be the rear yard is 13 and a half feet?
The rear yard is to be six and a half feet.
Okay.
Is the structure already built?
No.
Okay.
No. So it is, it is confusing. They're, they're asking for a variance of 13 and a half feet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Six and a half feet inch.
From the fence. Right, correct. But again, however, that's the concrete pad. The actual poles will be seven feet, six inches from the fence. So, but we did send out notifications. We received zero in favor, zero opposed.
There's no way to do it.
The applicant lists their special circumstances as their backyard is a little bit smaller. It kind of goes towards the side yard, and there is a tree in their backyard that may require removal if they try to find another place. And I clarified that it is six feet, six inches, not six and a half. And the, the purpose of the rear setback requirements is to keep everybody's property kind of on their own property, so it's not affecting other surrounding homeowners. There are other areas in their yard. I'm going to jump ahead. If you look, so over here, there is more room over there. The, the applicant wants it right up next to the kitchen door, so they don't have to go through outdoor elements and everything, which is why they want it where they want it. But it does, it will overhang, not really overhang, but it will be closer to the fence and on to the other property's yard, or driveway, not yard, driveway.
So next door's a driveway?
Correct. That's, that's the driveway in that picture, right over here. This is the driveway of the house next door.
There's six and a half feet still.
Okay.
So staff is recommending denial and suggesting a 10-foot setback for those poles rather than the seven foot, six inches, or suggesting moving it off a little bit more to the side yard and creating a breezeway from the house to the patio. And with that, if there's any questions?
Go back to the drawing of the, please. How wide is it now?
So nothing's been done yet. Correct. Nothing's been done yet. And, um, I said that.
What is this number here, though?
So this number's still, it's still overhanging over the front porch.
Yeah, from pole to pole, though. How, how wide is it from pole to pole?
I'm sorry?
Your vertical poles? How wide is it now?
Uh, I think it says 17 and a half.
No, that's your overhangs, isn't it? That's outside, that's, that's the slab, isn't it? I can't, I can't tell. Is that the slab measurement or your poles right there?
No, yeah, it's not from pole to pole.
It's not from pole to pole. That, that's where you measure from. And then, oh, it's a survey, Jackson, I said anymore. But it's a survey, you'd be measuring from pole to pole, you wouldn't be measuring from the overhangs, would you? Yeah. So my question is, how wide is it from pole to pole?
What's this number here, though? Yeah, from pole to pole, though, how, how wide is it from pole to pole?
I'm sorry?
Your vertical poles? How wide is it now?
Uh, I think it says seventeen and a half.
No, that's your overhangs, isn't it? That's outside, that's, that's the slab, isn't it? I can't, I can't tell, it's in, is that the slab measurement, or your poles right there?
No, yeah, it's not from pole to pole.
It's not from pole to pole. That, that's where you measure from, and then, oh, it's a survey, Jackson, I said it anymore, but it's a survey, you'd be measuring from pole to pole, you wouldn't be measuring from the overhangs, would you? Yeah. So, my question is, how wide is it from pole to pole on the in, inside, how much width is there?
I believe the applicant and the contractor is here.
Okay, okay, 'cause what I'm seeing is, doesn't have anything to do with setbacks. 'Cause you, you know, you can put your overhangs over a setback.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're looking at the poles.
Looks like, looks like some of it's going over their existing roof.
Mm-hmm.
And, and y'all, and the staff just says if we can get the poles with two and a half feet away from the fence, y'all, staff was okay with it?
If you can get the poles ten feet from the fence.
Ten feet from the fence, and they're...
Which is two and a half more feet.
Two and a half more feet.
Yes, two and a half more feet.
Okay. And still do the same things, then the overhang, we look just like that. Okay, uh, excuse me here, any questions, or Ray, any questions? Stephanie?
How tall is the fence?
Um, I didn't get a measurement, but it, it was about six foot when I went and took this picture.
It looks like there would still be, one of the concerns was having to move a tree if you moved the, if you, right, that's what you stated in the...
That is one of the applicant's concerns. Is, my, my guess is...
It looks like there's trees in the way.
My guess is this tree.
But you're still gonna have to trim or something, right?
Correct, that is my assumption, which is why staff was thinking that it might be better to put it over here where you don't have to do any of the, the tree removals.
But I could see why they wouldn't want it to be over there, because I would wanna walk out my back door and actually walk out to a covered...
Yeah.
Does the back door fence, Wes?
The back door is right here.
That is the back door, right there, okay.
I think.
Can you go back to the original?
I don't, I see that across the side.
No, I'm sorry, at the very beginning, that.
Oh, this one?
Yeah, that one's, okay, help me orient, so, where you're looking.
It is it?
I just hit the wrong button.
Intensive an acre.
Okay, so, they're looking at putting it, my hands are gonna be shaky, but right about here, 'cause that's the driveway, and the big empty spot that I was pointing to is over here.
Okay.
You should be...
So, this one right here is about where they're putting it, and over here is where staff was suggesting.
Neighbor next door didn't have a, a opposition to it, huh?
We did not receive any opposition or in favor.
Did you say it was gonna hang over the driveway?
We feel it's going to be close to the driveway, it's not necessarily gonna hang over the fence, um, but with it being seven foot from the fence, that's, that's kind of a... Not very. Is there a picture you want me to leave it on, or the recommendation?
The drawing, if you'll leave the drawing up there.
This one?
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Thank you, Ray. All right, uh, public comment, move on to public comment.
I'm Jeff Earnshaw, I was sold by Rice and my friends.
Yes, sir, Jeff.
Yeah, sorry.
He's Jeff Earnshaw. He is the contractor, and I'm Nicole Hamilton, I'm co-owner of the house. Um, so, the reason that we wanted to put the outdoor patio here is, like you said, like, because whenever you come out in the elements, right, like, being in a covered area, um, it is about seven feet, or six and a half feet from the drip line to the fence of the neighbors, um, and then there is their, uh, their driveway is on that side.
Okay.
And so, um, we did speak to both of our neighbors, because our backyard, I don't know if you can tell on that drawing, but like, we have two backyards that our backyard touches, so on one side, um, is, uh, they, they were completely fine with it, it's a little further away from their back patio, and then the one whose driveway we face, Ms. Sarah, like, she also didn't have any problems with it. We did take it to Bentwood, um, you, in order to build something in your backyard, you have to take it through their Architectural Control Committee, and we submitted these drawings to them, uh, and they have given us permission and said that they feel like what, something they do want us to change is the metal beams, they would like for us to wrap them in cedar, just so that they're a little prettier for the neighborhood, um, but that, that was their request, but any questions that you have, like, we would love to, oh, the other thing, one of the reasons why we don't wanna put it, so we actually, the big tree that it showed, that tree had to come down, so it's already been removed, um, it was very sad, like a thirty-year-old oak, um, but it was coming up underneath the house and already starting to mess with the foundation, and so, um, so that one actually already had to be removed, but in the corner of this, there is another large oak tree, and that's the one that we're trying to stay away from, like, try to leave some of the vegetation, um, we also were hoping eventually to be able to put a pool in that side yard, um, it seems like the, the better place to put it, instead of right out the back door, a little over to the side, that way we can fence it off, um, just for safety, um, to try to stay with the requirements of the city.
Okay. Any questions?
There is a question earlier about the distance between the, the post.
Oh, yes.
So, the concrete slab is fourteen by twenty-two, um, there is an existing sidewalk, probably two and a half to three foot, so that would make, uh, pole to pole roughly thirteen, twelve and a half by twenty-two long.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, the fence that's in the picture has been changed, it's now a seven-foot fence.
It's what I'm sorry?
It's now seven foot tall.
Oh, okay.
And a wood fence.
So, the, so the Architectural Control Committee, Bentwood's already approved it with some exceptions about wrapping, some, putting some cedar around it?
Yes, sir, and they asked us if we could try to keep it, um, about like fifteen feet tall, and, 'cause I think in the original drawing, it's like seventeen and a half, and they said it's okay, but if you could, it'd be better.
Wait, it still gives it the breeze?
Yes, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So, is it possible to move those poles?
Ten, two feet?
So, you definitely can, um, part of what we were hoping to do is to build an outdoor kitchen there, and what that does is it puts the poles on the front portions of your cabinetry, instead of where you can set them at the back and kind of build your countertop around it, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But if we were basing the poles, the pole measurements from pole to pole, then the variance wouldn't even need to be complete, because the overhang, they, they were basing it off the overhang and the slab, not the pole to pole, we didn't have the pole to pole distance.
So...
From the pole to the fence, like, from that exterior pole to the fence is gonna be seven and a half feet.
So, you wanted to move the pole in, not the overhang or the...
Yeah, I just wanted to...
Correct, every, every rear yard is supposed to be a twenty-foot setback.
Right.
So, they're encroaching thirteen and a half feet into that twenty-foot setback, so the question is, what's the special hardship or circumstance that this would be different from any other backyard in our community, that they should be able to build into that setback?
Yeah, so an irregular lot, though. Right, there's, wait, wait.
Been there how many years?
Sitting on there. The way that drawing was, I thought it was a side yard for a second, and then the drive, there's a driveway next door to it, and the people's garage, right, is that what it is?
Yeah, so our, our driveway is actually on that same side, but our driveway comes to the side of the house, and our front yard faces, like, the front of our house faces Woodbine instead of Columbine.
Wow.
Any more questions?
And the neighbors, and the neighbors there that'll be at the driveway, they, you talked to them?
Uh, yes, sir, and Bentwood also went and spoke with them, just to confirm, uh, before they gave us approval.
Okay. Any more questions?
It is a strange lot, what is directly behind you?
Uh, a driveway and the side of someone's house, like, their garage is right there.
I said irregular, he said strange.
I got it, I got it. But that is a...
It is, it, the shape, the shape of the lot is a little bit odd, just 'cause it kind of sits on the corner, um, and not of straight streets, 'cause they're kind of rounded right there, so it is a little bit of an irregular shape, and someone a long time ago, add, made an addition onto the house, and that's part of where, like, the backyard got lost even further, like, it was already small, but whenever they put the addition on, it made it a lot smaller, so really, most of your yard is on the side.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was public comment, now the board comments, let's hear them, if any, or a motion?
Is there some kind of compromise that we could...
Or Aaron?
I'm just switching the screen for you, if you had, oops, wrong way.
Well, I thought about moving the poles in, but after looking at it, getting familiar with it, I just think you're kind of stepping over dollars to pick up pennies there. It sounds like they've done their due diligence with the Bentwood folks.
I'm not a fan of things being that close to fences, though, I just think it, it might work for them right now, but the resale value of the person next door, you know, someone might not like someone being that close.
On the driveway?
So, I wish we could come up with a compromise, I think that would be, but I don't know what that would be.
I mean, I don't think it's gonna affect the overhang. Looking at the pictures and where it's sitting, I, I don't see...
With the size of the yard, I think it's minimal to, you're still kind of overhanging, I only know that 'cause I did the same thing on my roofline, and we had to move it over, so to have the overhang go further over is just, we did metal poles.
It's not a fire hazard.
I think Bentwood's okay with it, and the neighbors are okay with it.
Okay, any more comments?
Out of curiosity, does the whole board have to agree?
Uh-uh.
I'm just curious, I can't remember.
So, you have to have a concurring vote of six, and since we have seven today, Stephanie, I think you're normally an alternate, so, the other six would have to vote for it.
Gotcha.
You're not a super majority?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's, just in the ordinance, uh, on this board, for some reason, it's, it's six concurring votes for everything, so...
Is, is the staff recommendation ten feet?
Say that again, man.
Is, are they, are you saying that ten foot would be acceptable?
Yes.
Um, I mean, we, we suggested, if you are going to approve, do the ten feet, but otherwise, staff's suggestion was to move it, um, to another place in the yard and create a breezeway.
Could something like this be accomplished with a ten-foot setback?
That's what they were saying, if they did the ten foot, then they couldn't finish up the, up the kitchen.
Oh, they could, okay, the kitchen would... Yeah, it just, it wouldn't be as large.
Get some wireless poles.
I'm okay with it as is, but I'm just wanting to vote. Emotions? Talk about it more?
And Stephanie, just with your concern, are you just the, how near it is, and like, a side issue for the neighbors, or, or if there's a grill, or a, a, uh, outdoor kitchen adjacent, is...
I think it's, well, we've seen so many of these.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's just being that close to a fence and that close to your neighbors, I think it just, I, I prefer to see setbacks, have setbacks, and not be encroaching and crowding property lines, that's...
Yeah, but the lot, what's getting me is the lot shape, it's, it's a strange lot design.
It is.
And we can zoom in, which we can't...
But there is room to put that somewhere else where you're not right over, I'm, you know, just, that's my personal.
That's, okay.
And then...
Motion?
I'll make a motion to allow a six and a half, six-point-six feet, that it's six-point-six feet, seven-point-six feet.
To the pole.
To the pole.
Okay, we have a motion, we need to discuss the motion?
I'll second.
We got a second. Now, I need to, uh, get, can I go back to public comment? If we, just, I'll step back up. You, you heard the discussion here, and I don't think we have the votes...
Yes.
...to get it. Uh, staff has recommended, if you do move the poles back in, ten feet, to ten feet, right? That staff, staff would be okay with it.
Right.
Uh, it's your call, we can take, we can go ahead with the vote, as it is, and see how it turns out, or y'all can s, say we will move to where staff is okay with it.
So, actually, actually, by, by moving the poles, you're talking about the seven-six, so you're gonna add about another two-point-four?
Yeah, something like, mm-hmm.
To get ten?
Right.
So, that really, that really doesn't change your roof structure, it just changes the location of the poles, correct?
It just changes the location of the poles, yes, sir.
It doesn't change your overhang, and it doesn't change your foundation, your slab.
Not, not to complicate it too much, the reason we're more in support of a ten-foot is because of the fire rating, because you actually have a full ten-foot separation there.
Uh-huh.
Now, side yards are usually five yards, rear yards are twenty feet, we don't want something in the future to change and somebody have to fire rate a structure, especially an open structure, is very difficult to fire rate, and it sounds like they've been recommended to put cedar on as opposed to just the metal, but that's just another item that we considered, I'm not saying it should be a major emphasis for y'all's decision, we're just trying to think what is gonna be, what's gonna happen in ten years down the road when maybe they sell, maybe they don't, somebody wants to move in, build it in, may complicate things down the road, but that's, that's what we're looking at.
Fair enough.
Are you wrapping it in cedar, or you're putting metal post, and then wrapping it in cedar?
It will still be a metal structure for the fire rating, and then we'll wrap it with the cedar, just at Bentwood's request, yes.
So, in all in all, you're really not changing the roof line, you're just moving poles in.
Right, and then if we put it against the back fence, in that case, we'll have the twenty feet from the house, so it'll actually sit closer to the fence line, it'll just be a different neighbor, um, 'cause it'll be about, have to be about five foot off the fence line on that, which, according, right, to city ordinance, if it's twenty feet away from your house, if you can get it that far, then you can be within five feet of the property line.
Doesn't end up changing the...
So, so you would be moving it to a different position, is that what you're saying?
Right, so if we ended up, like, if the variance for us is denied, right, like, the place that it's being recommended that we put it, to get it far enough away from the house, it'll sit five feet from the, that, the opposite, back fence line, yes, ma'am.
Where it was suggested to start with?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. So, basically, you're saying you either want it right there, or you'll move it?
We would really like it to be right there, I mean, if two and a half feet is gonna make all the difference in the world, I think we can figure out a way to do it, um, it does, I mean, of course, it's a little disappointing, because plans have been drawn, and dreams have been dreamt, um, but, I mean, if that, you think that that is the best moving forward, and there's no way that we can get the variance as it is, then we would be happy to meet that request.
I don't think we have the votes.
Great, okay.
I'm okay with it, but I don't think we, I'm only wanting to vote. If we move it in to where the staff likes it, are we okay with that?
I didn't hear you.
If we move it in to where staff is okay with it, or...
So, do we already have a motion on the table, though?
If they move it to the other side, it'll be five feet.
Yeah.
Yep, that's the correct...
We do have a motion, Brandon.
Well, we're gonna have to read the motion.
Seven-six, seven-point-six.
The other position is a different position, and it's, it's...
Okay, yeah. So, we either need to take action on the current motion, or the movement should withdraw it, um, it's up to the movement, but...
Can I ask Ray one question before we vote? So, the position where they're talking about, if it doesn't pass with the, with the seven-point-six, that area that they're moving it to with a five-foot setback is already good, it wouldn't have to have a variance, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So, if you don't get the seven-point-six setback, you're gonna move... So if you don't get the seven point six setback, you're going to move it or you cannot move it the other two feet?
It would be, it would be really close, I mean, it would mess with the structure of the original outdoor kitchen. Like I said, the fence has been changed, so it's seven foot, so the viewing area straight across is from the neighbor.
And you wouldn't be able to put a pole back there?
Correct, that would, that would inhibit that also later on, because that's, that area right there would be too small for a pole. But then, like the pictures that were shown earlier with the white fence, of course, like I said, the fence has changed since then, and those aren't exactly, I know it's hard to get it from the road, but they just don't quite show just exactly how wide it is. I mean, fourteen foot is a pretty good, pretty good area, but moving that in, the outdoor kitchen, it's going to greatly decrease the area of the patio. As far as just what the poles would take up with the columns around it.
Could you recoup some space if you took the pylon look out of the posts?
Well, so that's kind of where the outdoor kitchen would go, would be where the posts are, just to maximize the space of the outdoor kitchen, because there would be an island in the middle. And then also to be able to put just a standard eight-foot table this way in between ten foot would cost some space, you wouldn't be able to have your chairs on the end as well. I mean, just, two and a half foot is a lot.
I'd really like to think you could do whatever you want.
And not being a fire hazard, as far as I mean. And then all the, I don't know if it, it doesn't say much, but I mean, we just try to go through the right channels and do everything right. I mean, there's probably numerous structures that didn't go through this process that are up and allowed.
So, I'm sorry, I have a question for Ray. The back setback is only five feet, but a side setback has more?
No, back setback is twenty feet, side setback is five.
Twenty feet from?
The property line.
Property line back?
It, well, technically, it's supposed to be from an alley, half the midway of an alley, but there is no alley, so it would be from the property line back.
Okay.
So in this case, this structure, since it's so close to the house, it is an extension of the house. When you move it more than twenty feet away in our ordinance, move it away from that house, it becomes its own independent structure under the ordinance. That's where you're able to get a closer rear yard setback. So think of it, although this is not going to be a storage building, it's, yes, going to be an outdoor kitchen, under our ordinance, it looks as those two things the same. And so if it's next to the house, it's as an extension of the house, so that's really the house's rear yard setback is twenty feet. An accessory structure, once it's removed from the house, twenty feet, it has its own setbacks.
And that's where you can get a five-foot setback?
Correct.
So you can still build five feet from that fence and be crowding your neighbor?
Yes.
Is basically where I'm going.
Yes. But most people don't do that with an outdoor kitchen, they do it with other types of structures.
Right.
In this case, most outdoor kitchens are right by the home, and we understand, I mean, they want to go out right to the outdoor kitchen, we get that. It's just our ordinance says this, and so we're trying to figure out how do we make it work?
Is the concrete patio there currently?
No.
Nothing is there, it's dirt?
We came here first, before we started anything.
Well, and technically, this is kind of your backyard, right? Is the front door facing?
Yes, this is on the alley.
Yeah, this is the back.
But it just is legally your side yard.
It's not attached to the existing houses, is it?
Yes. We appreciate that that is obligated.
You're doing it the right way, you're doing it the correct way. You'd be having a lot of fun if it's already built.
Well, that's the problem with being a rule follower.
And if the current motion fails, you can still take a second motion for the ten-foot, if y'all wanted to do that.
Has the current motion failed, is that what you said?
No, yeah, we need to take action.
Oh, if the current motion failed.
Point of order, we need to vote on it. Point of order.
So what happens if you vote, I'm curious? If they vote on the motion, it does not pass, do they then have to come back a month later or can we make a new motion?
You can make a new motion now, but I mean, if you can't get a passing one, then I mean, they don't get the variance, so.
I know, but what, if so, if it's determined that if they vote on it as the motion is now, but it doesn't pass, can they then make a new motion for the ten, so it's not like they have to go anywhere and come back a month later?
Yeah, we can still take a new motion after.
He was saying if, if for some reason, we weren't to agree on giving them the seven point six feet, and then we could make another motion.
I got you, I got you, okay.
So you don't lose anything?
I thought if we made the vote down and it didn't go through, y'all have to come home, go back and redo it and come back again, that's my mistake, sorry.
And can we re-vote on the same motion if it fails?
No.
It has to be re-voted?
If it fails, you have to have a new motion.
Motion's still active, yeah. I know, y'all waiting on me, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, we did the comments, we got the motion, we did the comments, all right. Do I have a second?
Maybe you're in a second.
Okay, let's go, let's go for the vote, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay. But you still passed.
Yeah. You got it. It's all right, we need to, we need to discuss that. You know, I get beside it. Let's see what I leave off, hold on. My, I've got a little fog hat going right now, hold on. That was a tough one. Getting too old for this. All right. Item number five, ZBA 23-21, 2512 Princeton Avenue, single member district number five, Karen Hesse Smith. Request for variance from zoning code section 406A point four, which requires five hundred from the lot, five hundred, five hundred feet, feet from the lot line of one short-term rental to another. So that's a foot mark right there, all right, not inches. Okay. All right, who's going, oh, here we go. Hello, Aaron.
Good afternoon, Aaron Vanoye, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. So we have a very unique case today. Those of you that were here last board meeting heard about a short-term rental and whether the decision to allow the distance between a short-term rental to be a variable distance based, meaning a variance could come forward. Well, this is the first one that has come forward, again, it's 2512 Princeton. It is in District Five with Karen Hesse Smith as our city council member, ASU College Hills. It is an RS1 zoning, and the variance is actually from a different section that you guys normally do variances from, but it's from 406A4, which is the distance, the linear distance between two short-term rentals, and it specifically says in there from lot line to lot line in that ordinance. And so that's what the variance is looking at. That picture right there is just a picture of the front of the property, showing the two parking spaces, that if they get approved today, they would go forward to planning commission with a conditional use request. It would still have to be approved at planning commission for the conditional use and then keep going through the process to obtain their full short-term rental. So today, you're not approving a short-term rental, you're just approving, can the planning commission hear one based on the distance difference? Okay? Just a reminder, there's basically three things that we can allow variances for, basically a special circumstances resulting in unnecessary hardship, overriding public interest, or literal enforcement. We did send out notices, we did have one response in opposition and one response in support. We'll talk about the opposition first. They did not give the exact address of where that opposition was, but they did reference a letter they received, so we believe it was within the two hundred feet. But they were, they did talk about the distance, but they were more talking about a short-term rental in general. And so while they're not excited about, their statement was, the distance already precludes this, why are you talking about it? And then they talked about the issues with short-term rentals. Well, today, we're not talking short-term rentals, we're just talking distance. So I did still include it as a response in opposition, because they did mention the distance, that they thought that was too short to have a short-term rental that close. The one in support was a property owner just on the outside of the area, and they are actually a person that owns two or three rentals in the area, in that actual neighborhood, and they thought it was a good idea. They said if they could convert their long-term rentals to short-term rentals, they would try to do that, because they actually have local control and go and look at the property, and sometimes the long-term renters don't have that. And so they've, they are looking at that as we move forward. So this one, I tried to use some different colors just to try to get the distances there. So you see here on Baylor Street, which is the bottom trapezoid that says CU 22-26, that has a current conditional use to allow that property to become a short-term rental. They still have basically one, one year from the date they were approved at planning commission until they expire, which I believe, and Ray's probably going to help me here, I believe is in November of 2023, no, December of 2023. So while they have not gone through the full short-term rental process, as far as getting the things that were conditioned on their conditional use, they are, they still have that ability within that one year. So we still show that as that property could become an active short-term rental. Well, if you look at the property along, along the alleyway, follow it back up to the subject property, which is on Princeton, that's 322 feet, that is property line to property line. If you drive the closest road, which is SMU coming down to Baylor, it's 557 feet. And I've got some more pictures that will give us a little bit better visual. The other item for here, I tried to zoom out intentionally, because we are kind of at the entrance, the eastern entrance of this, of this neighborhood. Right along Princeton comes just south of the CGCH, the Large Frontier Building. Obviously, across the street is a lot of sports and athletic fields, and you also see that strip of RM1, which tends to indicate higher density, less space for parking, all those kinds of things, and so there's more density in that area. Now, it is RS1 that they were looking at there. Little bit clearer, zoomed in, that doesn't have any of the colors except for the distances, so you can kind of see a little bit better of where that is. Just from a overhead map view. This is standing at the 2512 Princeton, at the end of their driveway, looking down SMU, I don't know if it's Drive Street or what exactly the end of it is, but it's looking almost straight south going down there. So approximately just past this fence and this intersection is right here, this is where Baylor turns to the right, and you'd go down Baylor, four houses, and on the north side of Baylor is where the property would be. Here is looking back to the east, you can just see the press box of San Angelo Stadium, you can clearly see the stadium lights, those two at least, but you also see there's a lot of tree cover in this area. Some very good for San Angelo, some pretty good mature trees. We have some areas that have some even older mature trees, and so the anticipation, if we get more rain one day, they may continue to grow, so. So the next one, this is at the intersection of Baylor and SMU, looking back north. That is, just for clarity, that is the short-term rental right there. And so you can see that property from the very beginning picture that we had, this is the intersection, you can see that wood fence. And then this is looking to the west, down SMU. It is four houses, one, two, three, and then this house right here is four, right down there, would be the existing conditional use for a short-term rental. With that, we did the analysis. Talks about the 500 feet, linear feet between, by way of property lines, in this area, it is existing lots and existing homes, there's not vacant lots, vacant homes being built just for this purpose. It is a neighborhood that is in transition, we believe, that is going between owned and rentals and a few short-term rentals. It is close to the athletic areas over there, SISD, as well as ASU. There are noises and nighttimes that have lights and reoccurring noise throughout even the summertime, because of little league games and things like that that happen over there. Not uncommon for a neighborhood, it's probably any of us growing up that went in different neighborhoods and things like that. The applicant does believe that this request is keeping with the development of homes in this area, which is transitioning from owners and long-term rentals and things like that. And the literal enforcement, they believe, prevents the request to obtain the conditional use, meaning the literal enforcement of property line to property line is preventing them from being able to get a short-term rental. And so if it was measured or determined a different way, they could get a short-term rental, but our ordinance says literally it's property line to property line. This is what the variance would be the minimum action, and does not, we don't believe, city staff does not believe that it is, would be detrimental to the other properties in that area at this time. We also don't think it'd be contrary to public interest and would still be keeping with our zoning ordinance as it was presented, the only difference would be that distance variance. So the only, we do recommend approval of this request. It really is just a variance to the distance, it's not a specific distance like a setback of you're trying to determine, well, is 22 feet good or is six feet good? It's just a variance to the distance in general, and it would be only for this property, it would not be for the next-door property, or the next-door property is specific for this property. The only condition we would put on is just obtain that conditional use through planning commission within the 12 months. If they didn't do that, then this variance would go away. Any questions for me?
Was this property just recently purchased?
I know that they have purchased it within the last year, but I don't know how recent recent is to you.
Would this variance end if the property is sold in the future?
Currently, the way this, this variance is written, it would not. The question would be, and I may have to ask Brandon to help me a little bit here, because this would be a distance variance, their next step would be a conditional use. And the question is, can we condition this variance on something like that, which in the future, the property is sold to someone else, that pulls the conditional use?
If they got approved for the conditional use, I mean, that runs with the land, so I would say, no, we couldn't make them come back and get a variance once they sold it. But if for some reason the conditional use changed, went away or whatever, and then they, another owner wanted to do it sometime in the future, then yeah, probably they'd have to come get a variance again and then get a conditional use at that point, but.
So conditional uses do expire in the short-term rental after one year, they have to reapply. There are various reasons that the planning commission could decide not to re-up that conditional use, if they chose to, then every year after the first year, it's a two-year renewal. And so every year or two years, they are being looked at to see how they're, are they a good actor or a bad actor in that neighborhood as a short-term rental?
That's a good question on that, but so the short, if we prove the short-term rental on any of this, not just this one, it stays with the property from owner to owner?
The conditional, well, and maybe I'm, since they renew it each year, so, or they renew it every two years, right?
Then they can renew it every two years, yes.
So if they got a conditional use for the SCR and immediately sold it, the conditional use runs with the land, but it still expires by step or by ordinance in two years. So the owner can get the benefit for as long as the conditional use is granted by our ordinance.
Okay, on all short-term rentals?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so it just stays, it doesn't stay, that designation doesn't stay with the property forever, okay?
To answer Mr. Barnhart's question, the property owner could sell it after they get their conditional use, and in that one year, they could transfer that to the new owner. But the new owner is responsible to re-up it within that original year, and they don't get a year extended from the date that the planning commission gave that.
But there's nothing that says a new owner would have to abide by short-term rental.
Yes, they have, they would stay.
So a new owner couldn't move in and say, this is my house now, I want to live here?
Well, in any short-term rental, anyone can move in and live there. They don't have to act as a short-term rental all the time, they could, they act as a single-family house. If they choose to rent it out on weekends or even weeks, less than thirty days, then they have to act as a short-term rental. But they can stay as a, hey, this is my, my family home and move on from there. But they can stay as a, hey, this is my family home and move on from there.
I'm sorry, I know, that's not what we're talking about.
That's okay.
Again. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to drag you out.
As Ms. Roberts Galinda said, that, you know, we're really not looking at short-term rentals today. We're looking at a distance variance. That is what we're looking at. Does this make sense to say that's how we measure the distance in this specific case, not in all short-term rental cases?
So have you talked to the people that expires in December? Whether they're going to use it or not?
They are still considering. The last time our staff talked to them, they are considering, because there's actually another one that's a little further south than them that also got rejected, and they are considering reapplying when the date comes up.
So 12 months is too long?
Are they kind of waiting to see how we're going to do the distance thing?
No, they are just waiting to see if they're going to activate their short-term rental, basically. And they're running very short of time.
Yeah.
For those of you that may not know, Planning Commission and City Council in particular has asked to review some of the short-term rental items, and so there's going to be some things that John James, our director, is going to be bringing forward to Planning Commission, and then again, City Council. I believe distance might be one of those things. They're even talking about distance between a short-term rental and schools. And so we've got some questions for them of what does that really mean? Is that public schools, private schools? Again, not for this discussion here. We're really looking short-term rental to short-term rental. What's the distance?
So when we're talking about distance, I know we had talked about something similar on the last time, where you're able to look up and kind of see on a map, where, specifically in my neighborhood, I can see, you know, this lot or this particular property already has an application in for a short-term rental. So I can already see the distance and see if they're approved or not.
Yes, our planning staff, as well as our GIS staff, have worked very diligently over the last couple of weeks to get the online maps updated. So now there's a short-term rental layer as well as a conditional use layer, and you can find them either way. And then it's really up to us as staff to continue to monitor, are they expired? Are they not expired? Do they have an application? Are they meeting the requirements?
When would this go in front of the planning?
They do have a pending application in front of Planning Commission currently. It depends on their outcome today. If they are awarded a variance, they could ask for a conditional use in front of Planning Commission. If they're not awarded a variance, that means they would be within 500 feet, and we would reject that application.
What kind of precedence does this set? The precedence, if we approve this, I mean, is that going to open up, you know?
I think that was the action taken last month.
I was not here last month.
Okay, so.
Because today, we're just talking about this individual property.
This is the only one we're talking about, so, and it has specific things that happened in the process of the purchase of this, and that's why we felt last month, after we discussed it with the owners or the owner, that it would be a very good prospect to let this be voted on and approved because of the circumstances that were underlying when they purchased it.
So this is the same applicant?
Yes.
From last month? It's the only applicant. Last month, we talked to them, and we decided that we would listen to this and let it come to us to vote on it, to proceed forward. And so that's today. We couldn't do it last month.
Okay, so, and then the reason you're talking about the fields and everything is because a short-term rental is 30 days or less?
Yes.
Right. I couldn't quite figure out why it mattered that it might have been next to Fields or...
Usually, people that are in opposition are in opposition because of the noise and heavier traffic that a short-term rental may create.
Okay.
While that's not your primary focus of the decision, I just wanted to give you some background in that part of town, that there's a reason that a short-term rental might be good there because of ASU.
Because short-term is 30 days or less?
Correct.
Gotcha, okay.
Good location for that. So the hangups are the person? Does that make sense?
I think the hangup is the technical, that because there's 500 feet, and if you're doing a property line to property line, it's technically 222. Whatever you write, but it's.
So looking at this map, if this was maybe right there on Princeton, on the south side of Princeton, we probably would be recommending against it because you might have backyard to backyard. But since you've got at least a street and an alleyway distance and a between, it may make some more sense, and it is over 500 feet if you go by way of street. Now, I could also see both of these operating very in unison. Maybe you've got a wedding, and hey, we're going to stay very close to each other. There are just different things when it comes to short-term rentals. And so, you know, if we looked at the block of Baylor and all the way to, is it Johnson or Jackson?
Johnson.
Johnson. If they're on each corner, is that okay? But that's really a City Council question to give us more direction on, and we're just trying to make the determination on these, on this one.
So if I come for a short-term rental and I get it, and I don't do anything, I stop people around me for a year?
Correct.
Well, the time is too long. Six months.
Then you're going, then you're reapplying every six months.
Do they want to sell their rights?
Okay, we can focus.
Let's not get into vested rights now, Gary.
Focus on Gary, focus.
Focus, Gary, focus.
Adjust, adjust.
Do I have a, let's do an auction for the rights for a short-term rental?
Probably coming up, yes, sir. I do know the applicant is here to speak, and there may be others here to speak, I'm not sure, so, depends on, if you have any more questions for staff?
No, I don't think so. Do we have any points? Okay, public comment. Do we have any public comment? Does the applicant want to step up? Speak to?
I don't know what I'm going to say, but I didn't say it last time.
Yeah, okay, no, that's fine, that's fine.
I wasn't really planning on getting up here.
Just take your name again.
Doug Robinson.
You may want to repeat everything.
So just since then, I thought today, I was going to walk out of here and I was going to be good to go, but I guess not. But anyway, just to know what I've done since then, since the last one, I went around to all of my neighborhood, more than what I thought, and which I think the Planning Department, what they need to do is when they're sending it out to the neighborhood, also send it out to us, to where we know, because I wrote up a whole little thing, and I took it to every neighbor that I had, after I had neighbors come up to me. And so I had one lady call, and I met two or three people. And so I don't know who the one that said that they didn't want it, and that's the other thing. So let's say that they don't want it, you don't know what their address is, how do you know that they didn't get that from someone else, and they're just trying to keep the competition down? I mean, we don't know that. The thing with the maps, thank goodness we're doing the maps. Let's just make sure that those are correct, because we, and you weren't here last time, but basically, they said that we could do it at this place, and then came back and said, you can't. So that's the reason that I had to come up last time. So other than that, I mean, I, the people that I talked to, and, you know, I told them that I was from here, I live in Santa Rita, so I'm not very far away. Every one of them was like, yeah, we love it, because we've already got two homes, group homes, I guess, in the neighborhood or whatever. And then we have one lady that called and said, yeah, I'm your back neighbor alley, and there's a person in between us that's a rent house that doesn't take care of it, and the person that's next to her, we're all for you doing it, because we know that y'all take care of the house. So that helps.
Well, there was kind of a question formulating, that when you did the polling, how many were owner occupied and how many were renters around there?
I don't know, I don't know. But I just went out, and one of those things might have been my thing that I left, and it may not have even been in the house within 500 feet, because I didn't know what houses to leave them on, so I was just leaving them on every house if they didn't answer the door. So, anyway.
You're busy.
I am busy. I've been working on this, you say, how long has this taken? And let me tell you why it takes so long. I mean, when you're dealing with occupancy tax thing, the, or change of occupancy, and you're dealing with project docs, and you're right, you know, you say, well, it's going to be a year for an STR to get going. Let me tell you, we've been doing project docs, and it takes forever, because a lot of it's written for commercial, which, you know, I get it, STR is kind of commercial, but some of this stuff, you're just going, we're not building anything, and so it does take a long time.
We might invite you to our next project docs meeting.
Yeah. I need to, I need to get learned on it.
I've heard stuff, so.
Well, I don't guess I have any more questions for you, Doug. That other one, that other property that hasn't done anything is holding up the process, basically, is what I'm seeing it, right? They don't know what they're going to do. Have you talked to them?
No, no, see, I just learned what property it was when one of the neighbors came to the door, knocked on the door, and said, hey, you know, this is it, and I guess, I guess that's where I learned from it. Or no, it was what you sent me the other day, is where that one was. So I didn't even know which property it was, I just knew it was 300 and something feet away, which would be nice to know which one it was, but.
So do you think six months is too long on these conditional commitments for this stuff? Or do you, what if they start next week wanting to do the process? Will they have the, will we be out of the running?
If they start doing the process?
Yeah, the one that has, I call it conditional commitment, but for an STR, 322 feet away. I guess that would be the Planning Commission's say, huh?
Well, if he gets a variance, then it won't matter. But yeah, the Planning Commission could still deny based on other reasons, I guess, but.
Yeah, no, I'm just curious.
Just reminding you.
The people have a conditional commitment to do one, they haven't done anything, and they've got till December to act on it. If they start acting before December on it, does this kill his deal?
No.
No?
No, but they might not be, they might be remodeling the property and might not just be done.
So we're going to vote on, yeah, we're going to vote on this today, and then they're going to go to Planning Commission, and then if they're approved at Planning Commission, there could be two there, within 332 or 557 feet, because they've both gone through the actual structure of what they need to do to become a short-term rental. That's the variance.
Is there any easier way to make money?
I'm wondering that myself.
Bureaucratic nightmare.
It has been crazy.
All right, Doug, thank you, man. All right. Did you get straight on that?
I'm good.
All right, all right. All right, board, let's comment, if any, and if no comments, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance. Give a second.
Okay, was there any comments before that? Okay, all right, we have a motion to approve in a second. Not any more comments on it, so I'll ask for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against? Passes seven, we got seven here? Seven, zero. Good luck, Doug.
And just to update staff, they are going to next week's Planning Commission on the 18th, so we do have them on that agenda and didn't notice that way, so they are able to go to that agenda, to that meeting.
Where are we done?
We got one more.
Item six, amendment to action, August, is that the one we're on?
Yes.
Item six, amendment to action, August 14th, 2023, ZBA 23-18, 708 South Randolph Street, single-member district, number three, Harry Thomas, a request for approval of a variance from section 501.8 of the zoning ordinance to allow four-foot front yard setback with a 13-foot setback to structure instead of the required 25 feet in the two-family RS2 zoning district. Hello, Ray.
Hello, Ray Lineberry again, planner. So this one may look familiar, it was here last month, you guys approved a 14-foot setback instead of a 25-foot setback. The contractor went out and laid the concrete and called for an inspection, and the inspector found it to be 13 feet instead of 14 feet.
Didn't inspect it?
No, it was where the, wasn't it where the old houses?
I was going to say, it was where the old houses.
All right.
So this is an amendment to the one you approved last month to give them an extra foot. If the picture on the left was the way it was last month, when you saw it, they went out and poured the foundation, and this part right here is the part that is 13 feet instead of 14.
It wasn't poured last time, right?
If you look at the picture on the left, that's the way it was.
But the inspector went out there at that time and measured it before it was poured, correct?
Don't know the answer to that question.
Well, I want it in the record. Did they?
I believe they did, and they were found, I don't know that we knew the exact number, it was they were less than the 25 feet.
Didn't know the number, they were less than, but they were less than 25 feet?
They were less than the 25 feet required, and that's when they came in.
How'd they know the number now?
They asked for less than 25.
They asked for 14, right? Correct, they asked for, well... They originally asked, they originally asked for even less, but when you look at, do I have the site plan?
They asked for 10, right?
I do not think so. When you look at the site plan, the carport is what was less, and so it was figured that the house, which is right here, is what they needed the setback from.
It's the front, it's the part that's sticking the farther south, which would be the carport.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
And which is on your left there, when it was just formed, it was, that's what we were dealing with last time. Now they have it poured, when did you catch it? After it was poured?
It has been poured.
So they got turned down and went ahead and poured it?
No, they, you guys approved 14 feet.
No, they, the contractor left the meeting and poured the next day.
Poured it the next day?
As we understand it.
Got you.
And then the inspectors had gone out after the pour and noticed that it was not correct. The building official did go back out and remeasure to confirm that it is at 13, 12, 13.
13.
13 instead of 14.
And this is the one that had quite a good right-of-way on it also, right? Correct? Big right-of-way?
Very large right-of-way, it was a home that had burned down, they're trying to rebuild the home.
Yeah, right here.
Because we were lining it up with the others that are on here.
Yeah, the other house was 14, and that's why we agreed on the 14. But we did send out more notifications, and we didn't receive any in favor or opposed. So, again, the, you guys approved 14, and the inspector found it to be 13 feet, the residence right next door is 14 feet, so staff is recommending denial for, of a 13 and uphold the 14.
Who told him the 14? Who told him the 14?
We did.
No, 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 that 14 would work. They came to us with 14, evidently that evidently it would work. And now it doesn't work, just, did that?
I don't know what you just said.
Well, the last, when they came last time, they wanted 14.
Correct.
Who told them 14 would work?
Actually, go back to that, go back to your picture, Ray, that you have, I'm sorry, that next one forward. So what we did, Gary, is we lined it up with that lot in front of us, and the properties...
This one right here.
Yeah, they were lined up with that and that one, and it measured to be 14, and that's what they were approved for.
Mm-hmm. So they, the applicants thought 14 would work, no one told them 14 would work?
Correct.
Okay. It was already set up, yeah? It was already formed up. Okay, go on.
I thought he already had it framed and poured when he came in the last time, too.
He had it framed, he did not have it poured.
Last time, it wasn't poured yet.
Correct, it was not poured yet.
It was framed, yeah.
Formed, formed.
Framed to the walls, like I'm Madonna right now.
Any further questions?
Did he have to reapply? Is this a reapplication? Right? This is a reapplying situation?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Quick picture, you don't believe in it.
So y'all going to deny?
We are, staff is recommending denial to uphold the 14 feet to keep it in line with the other two houses.
I don't think I'm getting the whole story. But go ahead.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
Got any questions?
No, sir.
All right. Public comment.
I'm Michael Gonzalez, I'm the builder.
Oh, Michael.
I was here last month for the variance. So we had the form set, and we set the variance. I'm not sure if it was a mistake on the measurement for the fourteen feet or thirteen feet, whether it was on me or the city who put in the variance last month. Nothing changed from where the pad is at. It just turns out, I believe someone made a mistake, whether that was on my fault or the city who measured the fourteen-foot setback, which it's actually thirteen foot.
It's Murphy, but go ahead.
Yes, yes. So nothing has technically changed.
Well, it, it has, because they wanted to deny it, to deny it, and you're already poured.
Correct, I wasn't aware that there was a second variance going on. I had no idea. I poured, I think I realized, man, I think maybe when I probably started framing, I realized there was a sign up in front, and I actually thought that it was a variance that was mistakenly put, that it was last month for this month. I was unaware of why that was there.
So, so you don't know who told you fourteen foot would work?
No, he's saying that whenever he formed it, that he doesn't know if it was a mistake on the city or if it was a mistake on the builder, that it was technically fourteen or the thirteen when it was already poured.
Correct.
When they came in and asked for the variance the last time.
But the variance, you, you applied for a variance, that's why the sign was there.
For that to be-
Right, and that's what we-
For it to pass.
That's what we spoke on last month, and we approved. And we approved fourteen foot, and then you poured it the next day without changing the forms. Correct?
Correct.
And then-
I wasn't supposed to, I think someone, I think we miscalculated the measurement. Not that we was, I was trying to move it back.
Did you change the forms after you approved?
No.
Okay, and then you said a sign just randomly appeared, and you didn't get any notification?
Correct.
For this variance?
Correct.
Okay. That's what we, that's what we were trying to figure out where we were on the same page.
Well, let's walk through the process. The first time you formed up, you called in an inspection, and that's when they caught you that you were encroached, right? On the foundation inspection?
Correct.
And they were measuring, right? They pulled a tape, measured, the inspector measured, and stated X, whatever X is, right? That you were encroached.
Correct.
That's who informed you you were in violation, was the inspector. Correct, okay. So your forms were already set, and you came and got a fourteen-foot variance, and we passed the variance uh, for fourteen foot, and they went out and remeasured and said, no, it, 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 you're, uh, you need thirteen foot. Right, is that what they're, that's what's going on?
Correct, which I believe-
But they couldn't have told you that the first time you went out there on the first go-around?
It should have been thirteen foot, not fourteen foot. I believe someone made a mistake on putting the fourteen foot. Because that's where the ditch is, and the forms were already set, so that's where we were wanting the variance to be approved from.
So staff, staff got the fourteen feet from the site plan that was given to us. We, we went off of the site plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it wasn't, an inspector went out and measured and came back and said, this is how many, how much he needed. It was, this is the site plan you turned in that was approved, and from the site plan, we got fourteen feet.
Okay, check that.
So this is all the, this is what you voted on before I got here, for the minutes, that it was voted on to be fourteen foot last month?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Because it was denial of a five-foot setback, but approval of a fourteen-foot setback.
Right, and it was based off of that floor plan, because I remember the garage here, and it was based on the old house that was sitting there.
Yep. The house itself is around fourteen feet.
Because you were asking for like ten feet in the beginning, weren't you?
Yeah, it was, it was five foot. His application actually requested five foot, and when staff looked at the floor plan, it was the carport that was that close. And when you look at the site plan, the house was fourteen feet on the site plan. Then that, that is what staff went off of, that's what was recommended and everything. It wasn't an inspector, an inspector went out there and measured and knew that they were more or less than the twenty-five feet. That's what got them in violation and got them sent to us.
Mm-hmm.
But at that time, it was already formed.
Correct.
When he got the fourteen feet approval last month, it had already been formed.
Correct.
I think that measurement might have been mistaken on my behalf, fulfilling out the variance.
Yeah, so, so-
Now that I don't want it to be fourteen, that, uh, I, I, that was a mistake on my behalf, I should have-
So staff, staff went off of the site-
You made the mistake then, all right, well, it's not, I mean, doing this twice is, let's not do this anymore twice type stuff. Let's have it all set up when we come in, because now staff's, now staff's denying it for some reason. I mean, it's already poured over a foot.
I didn't see the date of that, I don't picture, has there been any more work on it since?
Uh, yes, they have the house pre, uh, almost framed up.
And they got a large right-of-way through there, too, right, Ray? What's, how, how, how wide is the right-of-way? Was it twenty feet? Twenty-five? Ten? Ninety-two foot?
I don't remember, I wanna say it was twenty feet. I'm pretty sure it was twenty feet, because that's why the five foot. I'm pretty sure it was twenty feet.
It is a very large right-of-way, it was more than fifteen feet.
I don't understand the denial, uh, why y'all are denying it, twenty-foot right-of-way. He missed it, he made a mistake, he just got up there and said he made a mistake, and something, there's something else going on here that, that is, uh, uh, that just doesn't sit right with you, okay?
I would say our genesis of denial is because you go and pour concrete with the wrong distance is not, the staff still has an ordinance to uphold. Now, we, we can't waive it, and since it was an approval from the board, we can't go and do an administrative change to that approval.
But you recommend, but you recommend approval.
Say that again?
You could recommend approval.
If it was closer to meeting our ordinance, but there's no, what's the hardship or special circumstance? That he poured concrete without an approval letter? Or without the right distance?
Well, he thought he was right, because we approved it. The fourteen.
Well, I, I agree.
He, he was going with what we said, fourteen would work.
I agree, but I would, I would, I would hope that all of our-
We were given the wrong evidence somehow or another that fourteen would work. We should have been voting on thirteen.
I would say-
And now that the concrete is poured, to move that concrete is just onerous.
I would say every contractor is under the same rules to know what they're building and where they're building.
Well, that doesn't make us mistake-free.
I, I agree.
The mistake, the mistake was made at last ZBA. He thought he needed fourteen, and now he needs thirteen. And then we talked about right-of-ways and the big right-of-ways, and I asked, are right-of-ways moved all the time? And y'all responded, you responded, yes, we moved, well, let's move the right-of-way.
That would be a process that the applicant would have to request a-
I don't think we're gonna have to go through that, but anyway, that's just my opinion. But, uh, that, I've never seen a found, uh, inspector go out and pull a tape to measure setbacks on any of mine. So somebody pulled the tape.
I agree, but again, planning has no responsibility in that area. We're here to hear the variance or the distance.
And these plans-
We rely on our other experts.
That looks, it looks like, who drew the site plan? Was it professional?
Have to check with the general contractor.
Was it a professional? That's a-
Just a, then there's a zoomed-in one, that one.
There's no seal on there at all. Who drew your site plan?
Uh, I believe an architect, Steve Baker.
Steve Baker?
Yes, sir.
Is he the one that put the fourteen on there?
Um, not exactly sure of what, what exactly they all-
To my knowledge, there's only a twenty-five-foot setback on the site plan. There is no designation of right-of-way or how that got there. That would be for our, our building team to see what they saw, but-
That right-of-way through them, huh?
I think it did, yes.
There's a big right-of-way. Is there a building line on the plat? No.
No. Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, the plat was too old for that.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any question, any more questions for you? Okie dokie. That was public comment. All right, board, uh-
We have another member.
Okay, all right, step right on up, I'm sorry.
My name is Monica Navarro, I'm on behalf of the estate of Eugene Gonzalez. So there's four, we have four properties in that five hundred feet around that house. We had to run our sewer line through the front of his house, so the front easement. If it does get approved for the thirteen feet, does that affect where our sewer line is and where we can, like, if we have to do work? Because we've already put eight thousand to move the sewer line for pumps and all that to go around his lot, because for whatever reason, our sewer lines ran through it. So that, that's just, that would be our concern, I mean, the only-
I, I don't know where the easement's located.
It's in the very, like, it runs through the front of his property, the property line, against the street.
That's the right-of-way, the twenty-five-foot right-of-way?
Okay, so that's the right- That, that, that's the only concern that-
Right.
You know, and that, I guess that would be four yes or four no's or whatever, however it goes, but, uh-
Right, I don't think, uh, whatever happens, if you, whatever the vote goes, he will put a driveway over that easement, but then go under the easement if they ever have to work on the sewer line.
Which lots are yours, which numbers?
Uh, the twenty-one, twenty-two forty-one, uh, twenty-one sixty-nine, and then is it twenty-one, twenty-four-two?
Yeah, it's all those to the, to the east.
And then, uh, twenty-one, two-seventy-seven.
Okay.
So the corner, corner, corner.
Yeah, and then it's like Avenue B.
Okay.
There's two more that aren't on that, but it's-
Would you say it's next to the street?
Yeah. Yeah, so it's like right in the front, so the two, it's for twenty-two forty-one, those two houses are in that front easement, the, the sewer line. So my mom just wanted to make sure that, you know, if they do get the thirteen feet, that it doesn't affect work that we've already done or had to do, because they put the lot there.
Well, the thirteen feet he's wanting is from the, uh, red line at the front back.
Yes, oh, okay, so our sewer lines before the red line.
That's what he's needing, correct?
Perfect, then it's like, yeah, I guess, whatever.
Do you know what company did the easement for you, or, because I'd like to get a copy, just to have it filed on our maps?
Black Plumbing, I'm not sure.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, Black Plumbing did the work for it.
Okay, I'll look and see. That way, if it doesn't show up on our maps, we can get it on our maps, so that people in the future know, hey, there is actually, is, if it's an easement or if it's an actual right-of-way, because if it's a service line, we typically don't show service lines on there. But I'm guessing the sewer main runs east-west between Avenue C and Avenue D.
It's in the alley.
Yeah, and so to get to twenty-one, two forty-one, that service, that sewer service line that goes back to the main must run in front of the gentleman's property in question. We'll make sure that there's no conflict with the setback, which I don't believe there will be.
All's we're talking about, those thirteen feet from the front property line back.
I think so.
We're not playing with the right-of-way.
I think that's, okay.
Yeah, right?
Well, for you guys, yes, for the variance, that is correct.
Yeah, I know, but that, there's a lot, that's a large right-of-way.
It's a lot of right-of-ways, so I'm pretty sure it's there, but we'll be happy to double-check.
They'll make sure that you'll be all right.
I just wanna make sure.
And if I can get your information at the end of the meeting, I'll be happy to contact you.
Eight thousand dollar bill, because they're bleeding.
You're in good hands with Aaron. All right, any more public comment? All right. Board, comments?
So I have a comment.
Mm-hmm.
On the, um, minutes from last month, I went back over and was just reading those. So in that, and in the discussion, as I recall, was where, um, the applicant came forward, explained that he wasn't aware of any setbacks, thought that placing the new home or the old home would not be a problem. And then he was asked specifically, uh, by one of the members up here, if a fourteen-foot setback would affect the home plans in any way, and at the current point in time, it would not be viable to move them. He said that was at fourteen feet, and that's where it needed to be. So, you know, this is going on and on and on, if, you know, so you come back next month for something else, and the next month for something else.
Well, now it's poured, though. Last time it wasn't poured, it'd been easy to move last time. That's where I was trying to come up with the fourteen feet.
The meeting was one day, and they poured it the next morning, so it was already planned. Regardless of what we decided at the meeting, it would have been poured anyway.
I'm surprised they got a green tag for it with the variance.
We don't know that they did.
Did they, did they green tag?
It was a few days afterwards that it got poured, it wasn't directly the next.
When was it, sir?
It was a few days after.
A few days?
Yes.
When you got your green, did you get a green, when'd you get your green tag?
Um-
Yeah, do you mind coming back up to the mic? That way they can just hear it on the recording. Sorry, sir.
I wanna say, so one day was the variance that we had the meeting. I wanna say Tuesday or Wednesday I got the green tag, and I believe we poured on Friday.
Okay. Okay, so you got, you got your foundation inspection and approach inspection? No, that's just foundation, wasn't it? And so, uh, then you poured it the day after that? After the green tag?
I believe so, yes.
And when did you find out you were wrong?
I wanna say whenever the city put the, uh,
Speaking, yeah.
Whenever the city put up the, uh, on the property for the, for the-
For the sign?
Yes, the sign, yes.
So a week ago, two weeks ago?
I wanna say I noticed it definitely after I poured the concrete. Yeah, so it happened maybe a week and a half, two weeks ago.
Did you call for any inspections or anything for them to come out and measure? Somebody measured, huh? Somebody came out and measured?
I asked, I called for an inspection on the foundation and it passed. And then as the variance, I realized, I just spoke with Ray, I believe, yesterday, and I, I was like, I, I didn't even catch the measurement.
Uh, I see.
And that's when I believe you explained to me that-
We had asked the city official, the building official, to go out and measure it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ray.
We, we had asked the city building official to go out and measure it to make sure that they did meet the fourteen feet that was just approved.
Uh-huh.
And she came back and said, no, it was thirteen feet.
The house was thirteen feet?
Correct.
Okay, and you didn't move it at all, it was set, it was set just like that?
No, sir.
Could you tell if anything had been moved? Could they tell if anything had been moved?
Not that they said.
You know, you'd have to move ditch, tree bar, you'd have to go through a lot.
You would have to, you would have to see quite a bit, plumbing, everything would have to be moved. Ditches, I mean, yeah, forms, it would be extremely noticeable if a foot off is put a bit.
Oops. I think, I think the big right, big right-of-way might save you here, so I'll hold for your sake. And, uh, we'll see, we'll have the vote. Otherwise, what happens? Go in there and bust up driveway and move it back?
No, it's not even a driveway.
I don't think it would be the driveway or the porch.
I mean, it'd be the carport.
The porch, the porch.
It's in the porch.
The other driveway is the garage is front of the house, isn't it?
So, is it... Are we talking about the front of the house or the carport that's the issue?
Isn't it?
So, no, it's the front of the house, it is right here, that is the foot off for that porch.
Yeah, the carport's a lot closer to the...
Correct, but the carport was allowed.
To the property line than the vertical wall of the house. Vertical wall of the house is what we're concerned over. The carport probably is in the open structure overlay. That allows it to be closer.
The front ditch is one foot bigger than...
You do your setback from the front of the garage. That's why I've always done them for the last 50 years. Now, you're saying you're doing your setback from the front porch?
But according to their floor plan, that is not a garage, it's a carport.
Well, there's no difference, it's covered structure attached to the house, it's still...
They're in the open structure zone to where the car...
I'm sorry?
They're in the open structure overlay.
No, huh?
Where the carport can be within five feet of a property line.
The front of it? Towards the street?
Yes.
Correct, if it's substantially open, it's allowed to be closer, because in older neighborhoods, usually it's hard to do that because the lots are smaller.
We're talking the covered porch? Set your post back a foot. Set your covered porch back a foot, okay? That'll work, won't it? They don't count overhangs on setbacks. They don't count the flat work part of your front porch as a setback. They go to the post, right? Correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. You don't really need to come here at all.
It's already framed.
You got soffit on it and roof bill? Pull the post back. Pull the beam back. Can you do that? How far along are you on the house?
It's just, it's framed right now. I don't have windows in.
Okay.
I don't have interior.
Is your soffit on? Is your fascia board on?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay, your fascia board's on?
Yes.
Your windows aren't in, is the siding on or is it brick?
No, it's siding, siding is not on yet.
And that front porch is... You got it cut in, you got the roof on. You can extend that overhang, thank you, at the front, and just set the post back, move the beam back one foot.
The overhang?
Yeah.
You want to move it? Do you want me to create all in one foot?
No, it goes to your beam, your front porch beam. That's covered, correct? You got an LVL going across there?
Correct.
You just move it back a foot, if you don't get our approval.
Okay.
Okay? You can do that, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, right? Is that correct? Because you... Brandon? Is that correct? He can just move the beam back in his front post?
I have no idea.
Okay.
No, that's not my idea.
Is that Charlie? Ah, Charlie. On this particular deal, here, Charlie? I guess you got to get up and introduce yourself, moving property.
I'm Charlie Kemp, the building official for San Angelo.
Hi, Charlie. He's showing a four-foot covered porch. And evidently, he needed... He's encroached by a foot with that covered porch. Is that the way you understand it, where the covered part is?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, if he moves the covered... The beam and the post back one foot, leaves the overhangs and everything else the same, doesn't move them, he'll be okay, correct?
You're saying move the beams back and leave the covered porch, like a cantilever?
Move your LVL, mm-hmm, yeah, kind of. It'd be a wider overhang.
How far would the cantilever be?
Well, I'd have to assume it'd be a two-foot. At the minimum. How wide's your overhang? 16?
Yeah, I believe so.
16, one foot, 16 inches, and 12 inches is what? You know? So, if he... But anyway, if he moves the...
Is it allowed? I mean, as far as construction-wise, but again, I would look to them to make sure that that isn't encroaching too much into an approved building line.
Would they be measuring to the post?
Well, it says, it talks about, you can have a 12-inch overhang, and then if you get into anything more than four foot, has to be... It's considered a cantilever and would require an engineer seal. And that's in accordance with the IRC.
Yes. I don't think he'd go over that. He said he's got a 16-inch overhang, and if you moved it back a foot, 12 inches, that'd be 28 inches.
Yeah, because it's not being enclosed, it's just the covered porch.
So, he could move it back, the beam and the LVL that's up there at pie, he can move it back a beam, one foot, put his post...
In accordance to the IRC. And I know I keep kind of... But I want to make sure that we're not stepping on anything ordinance-wise, but under the International Residential Code, you can do that. Anything over any cantilever or span... And supported span over four foot would require the engineer.
Right. We're talking, what was it?
28.
28 inches, a little over two foot, two foot, four inches. I think he cut that overhang back, two inches.
Mr. Cortez, I do just want to clarify that he does have a notice of violation active, which means he should not be doing anything on top of that foundation.
Well...
Say that again?
He has a notice of violation from our building department?
Well, he has failed inspection, so he has to get that failed inspection in compliance, and this is part of bringing that in compliance.
Well, they're denying it. We're trying to work out how he can fix it without breaking concrete and moving things back, or vote, or the board vote, but does that fix it, though, if he moves it back?
That's why I was...
So, he does not have a stop-work order?
No, there's not a stop-work order or a notice of violation, but he does have a failed inspection out there.
So, if he moves the post back a foot, the structural post, it'll be holding the beam and the roof, will he be encroached?
Will he what, sir?
If he moves the post off the edge of the front of the porch, back a foot...
Will that 28 inches be encroaching?
No.
I don't believe it would be. Be great to see a actual construction plan that shows that, but...
Put the slab...
Being here in the meeting, I mean, what we're trying to determine, staff is saying we would recommend denial. That's just a recommendation. The board has the decision-making power to move forward.
Yeah. But you don't know that answer. What I'm saying is, you don't know that. What are they measuring, from the foundation or the post? Or the setback?
We do not measure from the flat foundation. We measure from the vertical portion, so if...
Yeah, the vertical portion.
Correct.
So, he moved the post back a foot. You know what I'm talking about, you can do it either way. But we'll vote on it.
Can I just add something just real quick, just so we're clear? He will have to have a footing underneath that post. When he moves it back, he can't just set it on that, and you know, that three inch, four inch. It would have to have a footing underneath.
I would imagine that outside portion of that porch does have a beam on it, and he can just span that LVL. What is that, Charlie?
This is a 4x4.
15 feet? That LVL span 15, 16 feet?
Well, hopefully he took a picture, because again, it failed, and then I'm guessing that they moved forward and went ahead and poured. So, he would have to show that where he's going to put that post does have a foundation underneath that support, okay?
That would be in your record, right, of getting the permit?
It failed, and then he poured it.
No, that would be him requiring... He would have to have a photo showing us that.
On that side?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We don't know if it does or not, right? I'm sure it's there. You'd almost have to tie it in, you don't run...
Well, a lot of times on that side right there, when they do that... When they do that covered porch, they won't put one on that side, because it's a covered porch. And so, they won't go do the ditches that deep. They'll just run it in front, because they know they're putting their post there.
Really?
Yes. And I was trying to recall if I remember seeing a ditch there when we did... When we measured out there, and I just don't recall. So, again, that's why we asked them not to pour until they get a green tag. But since he's poured, I'm going to assume he took pictures on that.
Well, the inspector might remember.
Well...
But he can dig down.
With 1,300 inspections a month, I don't think so.
He can dig down. Sure, sure, he sure can. I'm sure they wrapped it. I wouldn't know why they wouldn't run it. It's stepping over dollars to pick up pennies. Okay. That's neither here nor there about what's on the agenda item. Let's go back to the agenda item, I was just giving the guy a way out. I don't think that was recommended to him whatsoever. I think we got it clear that he can do that, if possible. And so, you might have two options here. But anyway... Thank you, Charlie. Got any comment?
I don't have any comments.
Let's have a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the 13-foot setback that it is currently at.
You want a second? Got a second? No second? You not second? Am I allowed to second? I'll second. More discussion? Y'all tell us? The guy's in a pickle. Mistake was made. By one foot. He has another option, best I can tell, besides busting out concrete. The carport still sticks out. I didn't know you could go set a carport in front of a building line.
You have to be in the over... The specific overlay zone.
And this was?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Even in a new construction?
Yes.
Even on new construction, really? Okay. So, you learn something new every day, don't you? So, the carport, in theory, is already encroached, no matter what overlay or whatever it says. I would have never thought that on new construction. I thought that was for add-ons. That's the way I understood it, but I never had to mess with carports. So, he's already encroached with the carport, in theory. And we got one foot here on a covered porch that he needs another foot. And for some reason, I don't think we have the votes. And so, I'd like to hear comments from the board members and their feelings on it, and we'll go from there.
Ray, do you know, when it was measured the first time, it says in the last minutes that the house was around 14 feet from the property line. Was that measured by staff? Where it was formed?
It was not. It was measured by that site plan that was given to us.
By the architect.
And...
But around probably wouldn't be on a site plan, there'd be a specific measurement.
The site plan did not include property lines. The site plan went to the curb and gave a measurement from the curb to the house. So, then staff measured the right-of-way from the curb to the property line and subtracted that from the site plan. And we verified with the applicant, this is what we did, is this correct? And he said, yes.
And was that via maps, or was that in the field?
Which, I mean...
The measurements, was that... When you said you measured the right-of-way, that was from the mapping system?
No, that was from the field, when we measured the right-of-way.
Bobby?
I guess, run me through the green tag approval for when he was pouring. Did someone...
Yeah, I'd like to know that, too, what the dates were. I mean, I know we approved it on August the 14th. When was... When did he get the green tag? And then I think he was approved, then he poured it, he said, three or four days later.
We asked him to pull strings, that's what we do. When you're going to do a foundation, you have to pull strings. And some of that responsibility is because of the contractor, has to make sure that he's pulling the string to the property line, not the curb line. And when we went out there, myself and the deputy building official, it did not pass. And we took pictures and everything, and explained that to him. I'm not aware that it passed on the foundation because of the situation, it going too close. As soon as we realized that, we did take it to the planning department and talk to them. And I believe that there was even some conversation on whether to approve it and everything, and they got back with us. But when we went out there, we did take pictures and we failed it.
Before it was poured, or after it was poured?
After.
The building inspector went before it was poured, we went after it was poured.
So, you don't even know if there's a green tag issued to pour it?
I'm sorry?
A green tag... Was there a green tag issued to go ahead and pour?
After we spoke with the planning department in regards to that.
You got a green tag? You got a green tag, okay. So, he did have a green tag. And that was the next day after?
It was poured when I went out there.
When did you go out there?
The inspector went out there, he red-tagged it. I went back out there to look at it and remeasure, and it was poured.
Okay, was that after this first ZBA? Which was, would you say?
August 14th.
August 14th?
Yes, after.
It was already poured?
Yes.
And he didn't have... Did not have a green tag to pour then?
That's correct. At that time, he did not. Because the building inspector failed it, it came to the board. I went back out there and inspected it and measured, and it was poured.
So, what happens if, Charlie? So, what happens now? If we approve the setback, what happens on the green tag for the foundation pour? I mean, what do you do?
If it's approved?
If we approve the setback, what happens if not getting a green tag for... Before pouring concrete? I think the way I understood you, what you just said, is he poured it?
Yes, and we can do a notice of violation and do charges on that.
Okay, okay.
As you know, like, we do try to work with them...
Sure, sure.
And everything, but that's part of the hardship that he's going through now, instead of like making sure before you pour kind of situation.
Is it...
Add a little salt to the...
So, he poured without a green tag?
I'm sorry?
Poured without a green tag?
Yes.
Get a red tag.
Well, without a green tag?
Yeah.
Poured it anyway.
It had to have been between the time he came here requesting the variance to the when I went out.
All right, can you repeat that?
It had to have been from the time he came here for the variance to the time I went out. It was poured.
Do you remember what day you went out?
Not on hand.
Okay. Thank you, Charlie. You have a green tag? You have a foundation inspection green tag?
I believe I still have it actually in my truck. So, are y'all stating that I poured?
Yeah, you poured.
It was a red tag and I poured?
That's what they're saying. Do you have a green tag?
I believe I have it in my truck.
Is your truck close by?
It's actually right in front of it.
Let's take a little break. Can we take a little break?
Yes, yes, and I think you must have been to go check.
Okay, okay. Let's take a little break. And go from there. Alright. Back to, he did, he did get a green tag before he poured. He has that record, we're waiting for it. Charlie?
I'm Fisher.
Okay. So does that answer your previous question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we go to, uh, uh, more board comment here? Any comments?
I have no comment. I already commented.
Okay. On the minutes, that was on the minutes last night.
Yes, sir. I made the motion, I'm good.
I'm good.
Mr. Chairman, is anything that the building official brings forward, is that going to impact any decision on this case?
No.
Okay.
I said it was a sidebar deal, they said he didn't get any inspection. Bobby had asked the question.
Right, correct, yes, sir.
And we straightened that out, I guess. Uh, I guess, I guess the building official has to verify that this is real. I don't know. I don't know.
Well...
You know?
I'm not...
They were saying he didn't have a green tag for the foundation.
I agree. That's, that's, yeah.
And Bobby had, had asked the question.
Correct.
And so we got it answered, uh, so far.
Correct.
So I think it does have a bearing, I'm gonna vote.
Okay.
I really do.
Okay.
Because when that happened, I don't know.
Okay.
I'm not getting the whole story. So I don't think we need to wait, I have the green tag.
I would say that's yours, yours in the motion, and you made the second.
I'll make the second.
So maybe I do have one more comment.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, so walk us through the green tag. So this was approved August fourteenth, August sixteenth. Someone goes out, measures it, says, okay, it is whatever it's supposed to be, and then they... And he has the green tag to pour?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And, Mr. Builder?
Well, I'd have poured.
I would have poured, too.
But I measured, but I wouldn't have been here in the first place.
That came on the Friday?
So, yeah, no, that would've been on, so we approved it on a Monday. We were on Monday, that would be Wednesday.
He's the youngest man starting out in building, in the contracting business, and he's made a mistake. He said, there's no way he'd know as much as I do.
Well, no, I know. That's why I'm asking you for clarification. No one can know as much as you do. So... So Bobby was asking about the green tag, so I'm asking you to explain the steps of the green tag. He got this on Wednesday, you probably poured, I think you said on Friday?
I...
Thursday or Friday? Thursday or Friday?
Right.
Okay. So when they get the green tag, does someone come out and look at the forms and measure at that point? Come to the permit department? What do you, how do you get a green tag?
Well, you do, well, hopefully, your foundation man doesn't approach. Okay. Now, builder, a builder, if he's doing his new deal, just look, level check the setbacks before he pours.
Okay.
And go from there. And usually, the only time it's ever caught after that is when you do your survey of the houses, so...
Right.
And so it was caught before the survey, which made me wonder what triggered it. And so it was just...
It was the variance, so that we, that we approved is what triggered the...
Triggered that, uh, uh, inspection, and it was missed. It was missed.
Yeah.
I don't, and then they said he didn't have a green tag. And he does. So, unless it's false, they made a mistake, too.
And the fourteen feet was just to line up with the property next door, right?
Yes. Well, he said that the fourteen feet would line up with the properties on either side.
Look, they have a garage, the carport's sticking straight out, so that carport's not aligned.
Yeah.
Those carports don't need, don't need the setback.
I think with this neighborhood, there's probably a lot of variances on the setbacks, because it's so old. So...
Yes, green tag?
Yes, it failed. It failed on the sixteenth, and then there was questions about pulling the string, and that's why I said it failed. And because the setback, we were concerned with that.
Uh-huh.
So they went to, um, he called, the, the building inspector called. I have an email I sent to planning, planning said it was good. So then we told him it was good to go. And then that's when they said, well, wait a minute, the carport's good, but not the house.
On the sixteenth?
Where, where's, who, who failed him?
Both Randy and Larry, at different times.
Somebody hasn't moved on?
Yes, because on the sixteenth, he failed.
But that one is on the sixteenth.
That morning, he failed? Because they said, what does the variance read? And we were concerned with the setback. And he didn't have the strings pulled. So then we checked with planning, and I have an email saying, as long as the carport's twenty-five foot back. We went back out there that afternoon, and it passed. But then it was determined that the house sits too close to the front property line.
Yeah, as long as the carport was twenty-five feet back?
From the curb.
From the curb.
I've been riding, I think, so I should've been before, there'd been forty something feet back. I keep lagging in the construction business.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure who I upset it, but... I mean, I clearly got a green tag. I remember when I called in for foundation, they did tell me to pull a string line. I did, I asked my concrete guys to pull, pull a string line when the inspection was being done. Um, of course, I don't sit out there, I just drove by. I don't know if it was that afternoon or the next morning. Saw the green tag on the rebar, picked it up. And I wondered about what I normally do. I contacted my, uh, concrete people and said, let's set to pour.
Yeah, and I don't think, like you said, upset anybody, nobody was upset. We went out three times and, and because of, of issues, trying to help you get it rectified. The first two times, we didn't even charge a re-inspect fee. So, I mean, like you say...
I did pay one of the fees, but I didn't know another time that y'all went out there to, to deny it. I mean, I got a green tag the second time, I called in for an inspection.
Third time, because remember July, that's when we discovered that it sat too close to the property line in July, so we had to come for a variance. And then we went a second time, and there were no strings pulled, and there was dirt in the ditch, so then we went out a third time. Remember? Well, I just, I just don't want you, you're saying you, you don't know who you made mad, I don't want you to think that we are trying to work with you.
Okay.
Okay?
I mean, I'm just trying to get a variance passed. I totally understand that if this was in a new subdivision, I mean, it's an older subdivision. It's one house in one area. I mean, I, I truly made a mistake, and I am admitting that. And, I mean, it's gonna be a costly one on no one but myself if, you know, the board doesn't recognize a simple mistake that I'm trying to get passed.
Yeah, but I think, uh, what you're trying to understand, the process of how it got overlooked, and you went ahead and got poured.
Yes, sir.
And here we are.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, so you, you don't know whether strings were pulled or not. And, uh, Charlie says they weren't, so we'll go with that. But you got a green tag. If I saw a green tag, I'd be pouring the next day. But I'd have measured. And that's what I'd do. But you probably measured two, because you thought you needed fourteen. So, I don't know where fourteen, thirteen got messed up. But anyway, we've got a motion on the table, any more to vote?
No.
Yeah? All right, let's have a vote, all in favor for the, uh, what was the motion? What's the motion to a term?
My motion was to accept the way it is now at the thirteen feet.
Okay. Then I'll second that. Okay, let's have a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed?
I oppose.
Who?
Terry.
Terry opposed? Okay. So that is one, two, three, four, five, six.
So it doesn't pass?
Doesn't pass, okay.
We need six.
I'd move that front porch beam back. What I'd do? One foot. You'll have about a two, a little over a two-foot overhang on the front, you'll have a counter lever. And they measure from the property pin to the front porch post. Not the concrete, the post, the vertical. Correct? Correct. Yes. And Charlie's gonna wanna see a ditch. And it's probably gonna be on that outside part. And you're just gonna let your LVL do the spanning. Because the LVLs will span whatever she says they'll span. Sixteen-foot span, is that what it was? Sixteen-five? Broad the door header. Right, Charlie? Two? Your, your hip's gonna be sticking out, I, I know, I see your brain turning, but you can make it work. You can make it work. You can make it work.
Don't let him forget that green tag.
Oh.
Yeah, get that green tag.
He grabbed it?
We sent it.
Yeah, I spotted that.
All right.
Nope, don't forget your green tag.
Okay, division report?[1658.41]